We'll see. We'll see.
Oh, really? That's been awhile. Oh, really? I didn't know that.
Testing, testing.
All right, thanks for indulging us while we fix the media issues. It is 5:34, so we will get started. Madam City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am, thank you. Mayor Kelly Krebs.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Robert Parkhurst.
Present.
Councilmember Edward Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Jean Goss.
Here.
And Councilmember Christine Lo.
Present.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum this evening.
If you can stand, please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome to our first 2024 meeting. Happy New Year. If anybody read the paper this weekend, my inspiration will seem a little familiar. But I just wanted to do a couple of things in the new year. One, put out again a call for volunteers. I think everyone in this room frankly has already heeded that call, but for those watching live, please look at last week's Mountain Views news for all of the various, for many of the various volunteer opportunities in town. We really do need a refreshing and a refilling of our volunteer coffers. And, you know, I think probably the whole town enjoyed something this holiday season that was put on by volunteers. So please consider stepping up and stepping in and helping out all of the various things that our volunteers do throughout the year, including at the holidays. I don't know if everyone makes New Year's resolutions. I'm infrequent and probably not very often follow them, but at least with respect to the city, I did sort of think about what I wanted this year to look like and what we wanted to do in the city. And as I mentioned in the article, really it's about maintaining, enhancing the city's programming, upgrading our facilities and infrastructure, and encouraging stronger partnerships with our schools and business communities. So, many of those things are already well underway and frankly, they're all a continuation and building upon priorities and interests and goals of prior councils and certainly city staff has conceived of and implemented a lot of these goals. But already, we're full steam ahead on many of those objectives, including the next phase of our library improvement project. As many of you may know, this past Monday, our temporary library opened. So we are full steam ahead on the temporary facility and that will let us begin in earnest the improvements at the existing site. And then, many of you may have noticed the fencing at Sierra Vista Park and we are in the process of replacing the playground equipment there. You may recall that we commissioned ARPA funds to pay for that and we are now actually doing that, which is great because that equipment has been in need of replacement for awhile. And there also, we also got a bonus exercise area next to the pool. So both of those things are happening and will take about two months. And then there are other many things that we're going to plan over the year, including two water main replacement projects and our street improvements and all of the various things that we are constantly doing to help improve and enhance and upgrade all of the great things about our city. So hopefully you are setting resolutions. My personal ones, I tend to like Mark Twain's take, "Life is short, break the rules, forgive quickly, kiss slowly, love truly, laugh uncontrollably, and never regret anything that makes you smile." And I always add on, "Take the stairs." Those are my, those are my personal resolutions. So on that, can I get a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
I move to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, agenda is approved. May I have a motion for a reading of resolutions and ordinance by title only?
Reading resolutions and ordinances by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Then we have one set of minutes to review and approve from our December 12th meeting. Do we have any changes? I know I sent in a small change. I don't know if there are any other changes, Madam City Clerk?
Madam Mayor, we did receive two requests for the same change in the minutes. The change was to correct the name of the mayor at the very end. And so, we made that amendment to the minutes and we are asking for the city council to approve them as amended.
Anybody else have any other changes? Would anybody like to move to approve?
I move that we approve the meeting agenda as corrected. Meeting minutes as corrected.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. So we have approved minutes. We're moving on now to mayor and city council reports. Anybody have anything they'd like to report?
I have a short one, Madam Mayor.
Please.
So Candlelight Walk was another, another great Candlelight Walk event that we do annually, the Sunday before Christmas Eve, and it was well attended. It's great to see a lot of the Christian-based faith organizations get together and celebrate this together, getting together and doing that. It's always, it's always a sight to see all those candles coming down Baldwin. Also, on New Year's morning, I was at the parade and I had the honor of surprising Dick and Kay Sappington on KTLA with a couple certificates or I guess it would be plaques from the Rose Float Association because they are retiring after 20 years of service to our community. And I also surprised them by honoring them with the Mayor's Special Award for 2003. So that was, that was a special morning. And of course, our float won the Best Use of Roses Award, which was really kind of Kay Sappington's thing. So that was a very high note for her to go out on. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Lo?
I too attended the Candlelight Walk and we, Mayor Pro Tem Parkhurst and I walked down with a big plethora of people coming down from Sierra Madre and everywhere and it was really exciting and fun. It was neat to see the diversity that was amongst our Sierra Madreans. And it was, it was well attended and every church's different quote or different saying and lesson session was, was unique and really pertain to our environment and trying to create unity in our community now. I also attended the last Friday, the last event at the library as we know it. It was a marking of the racks. So I got to say my goodbye to the racks and mine was, "Thank you for escalating my love of reading. I'll always remember the book reading contests. It helped spur on my competitive nature as a child." Also, I just want to report that the SCAG has completed their American Community Survey for 2022 and they reported that out in December. And most of the trends were not too, too new. We are increasing with aging and quality of life was, came out in the report. Also, it's interesting though with the increase in commuting, people going back to the workforce. We still have a large population that are working out of home, but single drivers increased while commuters on public transit decreased. So that was an interesting trend that I didn't anticipate with all of our new developments. So SCAG is looking at that. And that was about it.
Thank you. Councilmember Ross?
I'll just briefly, the Transportation Subcommittee, which has been at work for several months now, did not get a chance to meet. We had some illnesses, but we are meeting again tomorrow. So the email to contact us, to provide us feedback and input, I think it's been publicized many times. Do you happen to have that?
It's transportation@cityofsierra-madre.com.
Thank you, Analyst Carlson. So hopefully if people want to get in touch with us before tomorrow's meeting in the afternoon, that'd be great. And I'll report on that meeting the next time we meet. That's it.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. So as stated, I was at the Candlelight Walk, which was delightful. I don't have anything more to add to that. And I also was able to see the rose float there in the barn and see it at the parade. It was, it was delightful. On, I think it was December 18th, I attended the senior luncheon, which was incredibly well attended. Really a lot of fun and really just a great afternoon. And then the library farewell. I was there and signed the shelves as well and got to say goodbye to the interior in there. And if you had, if you didn't get a chance to see that, to go there, it was kind of an eerie feeling because you could just see through all of the shelves straight on back and then you go over to the children's room and it was empty, completely empty, not like what we normally see it. The Senior Commission did have a meeting since our last council meeting. I will just hit it really high because I know that we have a report from the Senior Commission and they will do an infinite better job than I do. But I'd like, as a liaison to them, recognize that we've got the older American ward nominations coming up and really encourage people to get those items in. And I also want to wish Chair Crock a safe surgery. She's going to be out for six weeks with hip replacement surgery, starting next week. And so, we're definitely going to miss her during that rehab time. Thank you.
Thank you. I will not add much. I also attended the Senior Commission lunch, which was my first official mayoral appearance, so that was fun. Also stopped by the citywide holiday lunch event at the City Yard and then was able to be in cursing court when the float came through on New Year's Eve, which was, it's always fun to see that. You sort of feel like you're getting a nice sneak peek before it heads off to line up for the parade. And then I just have a couple of city, official city announcements. Tomorrow morning at Starbucks from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., the police department will be there for the periodic coffee with a cop. So please join them for conversation and coffee. And as mentioned before, we broke ground at the park with the new playground equipment and as I said, it will last for about two months. So please honor the fencing and just in case anyone's worried about it, because I was, all of the various events that are going on in the park and at the baseball field during this time will be, you know, accommodated. So there won't be any interruption to those. So with that, I will move on to reminding folks of our code of conduct. I won't read it, but as everyone knows, we welcome and encourage your participation, but it cannot be disruptive to the meeting or to city business. And so, we will provide a warning, I will provide a warning, and if you continue to be disruptive, we will ask you to please leave. I don't foresee that being a problem tonight, but you never know. So, so just a reminder of that. And then I think we are ready for public comment for items not on the agenda. Madam City Clerk, did we receive any emails to that effect?
Madam Mayor, we did not receive any emails for tonight's agenda. We do have five speaker cards. Our first speaker card is from Jackie Pergola.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Happy New Year to you all. I know it was a great season here in town, so exciting. I'm here to invite you to the Senior Commission Valentine's Day Social. And of course, it's on Valentine's Day, on Wednesday, from 3:00 to 5:00 at the Hart Park House. We'll have some champagne and desserts and just enjoy a nice little short time, getting acquainted again with everybody. So please come, we would love to see you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pergola. Madam Mayor, the next speaker is Anita Thompson.
Well, first of all, thank you for all the support for the Senior Commission. My, what I want to just briefly tell you about is the senior lunch program. This has quite a history in our country. It's rooted in the Great Society legislation of Lyndon Baines Johnson, starting in 1965. The actual older American nutrition program that supports the senior lunch program was part of actual federal legislation in 1972. Has two major components. One is the concern about nutrition because as older people tend to be, you know, quick. So crackers and cheese sound pretty good for dinner. And then the other one is isolation due to no longer working and being employed as well as loss of family members and, you know, various physical issues that may prevent people from, from moving along. So the two components we look at is nutrition because nutrition plays a major role in health problems, mental well-being, sense of self. And so those were the two pieces that came together in the legislation. And those account for several parts of the lunch program that we're rebuilding here in Sierra Madre. One is in the legislation that lunch needs to be served in a social setting. So that's why people come to Hart House, because it addresses the issue of socialization. And we plan our program so that you come for a book club and you stay for lunch. You come for lunch, you stay for bingo. So we've really consciously built on those, that component. The second one is, is the nutrition. And I'm really optimistic about our new provider this year because a number of us on the commission go semi-regularly to kind of check on that. And kind of a corollary of all that is the food needs to be appealing. Because we all know the stigma of being the poor kid who eats lunch in the cafeteria while all the other kids get to have burritos and tacos and hamburgers at the carts around campus, which fortunately has pretty well disappeared from our school programs. But, you know, people think about coming to have senior lunch as something poor people do. But that doesn't fit either of the two original criteria. So we're working at building it and come on by, have lunch. Right now, we're small enough that you don't need reservations, but we plan on growing it to the point that there's like a high-end cafe that you need to call and make reservations for. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for that. Madam Mayor, the next speaker is David Gordon.
Good evening and Happy New Year. So I'm here in my capacity as president of the Sierra Madre Playhouse. And this is the year that we're celebrating our 100th anniversary as a place of entertainment. The playhouse opened as the Wisteria Theater, a silent movie house, on February the 2nd, 1924. And we're celebrating this year by transitioning from being a playhouse that just puts on plays and musicals to being a performing arts center. So I'm going to give you a flavor of what's on in the first two months of the year. So on Friday, the 19th, and on for two weekends, we have the woman who played Nellie Olson on Little House of the Prairie, Alison Angree, who does a one-woman act called Confessions of a Prairie Bitch, which is a kind of a good description of what this is about. On the 10th of February, we're having the Taiko Project. These are the Japanese drummers who bring their drums to the stage. That's going to be a family event. We're starting our jazz series on Sunday, the 11th of February, with the very famous jazz guitarist Greg Poirier. We're then having on the following weekend, Hindustani classical music. And then we're going back to jazz with Michael Carvin. Towards the end of February, we're having our first of a regular series on comedy. And then on the last weekend in February, the Tesserai Baroque Ensemble doing classical music. So that gives you a feeling of the variety of what we're doing. To celebrate our centenary, on the weekend of February 3rd and 4th, we're having a silent film festival as a homage to our origins as a silent film theater. And we're showing some of the great films made in 1924, which happened to be some of the great classics made by Buster Keaton and Chaplin and Harold Lloyd. And we're having an event with Harold Lloyd's granddaughter, Suzanne Lloyd. And that's going to be a sort of gala dinner that we're going to have, sandwiched with two Harold Lloyd films. So I advise everybody here to start booking their tickets and for the millions in Sierra Madre who are watching this evening's entertainment, to start getting their tickets as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Madam Mayor, the next speaker is Philip Yao.
Philip Yao, 513 Sierra Keys Drive. Just wanted to let you guys know the homeowners on the top of Sierra Keys are very happy that you have approved the water main project. It's been, you know, a little while, but they definitely are very happy and we're looking forward to the work beginning, you know, construction. We'd never want that to happen, but they're looking forward to it. We met last night and a couple of the other residents in the immediate, I'm talking about the top of Sierra Keys, had mentioned that while all this water leakage had taken place, they thought that there might have been some street damage that had occurred. And so what I did, I'm going to try to pass these out, if you don't mind.
This is just a couple of pictures.
Just a, I'll let you catch up with that. I only made a limited number of copies. But as you can see, that was just taken in the front of my driveway. So it's marked 513 there. But as you can see, on the asphalt, there are more than the usual amount of cracks. It's not just the typical cracks that you see. It's really frazzled. And I think the neighbors believe that with the water that had inundated below that and the, and it's a cul-de-sac. So it's not like we have a lot of through traffic. But you can see from there, it's pretty unusual that you, well, it's unusual to us anyway, that we have that amount of, of, you know, damage, I would say. So we would like to see, you know, what the city thinks about, you know, prior to this, maybe this rainy season, to perhaps slurry coat that and seal it so that it won't lift. With that amount of cracking, I think all we need is just a little bit of water in there and it would probably start popping out, so. But again, I just want to bring that up to your attention. Not, you know, there's just several of us neighbors were talking and they asked if I could come down here and alert you of that fact. What you see in picture is actually several spots that are like that all along through Sierra Keys, Key Vista, and then down towards Fairview. Okay? And other than that, Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Yao.
Mr. Mayor, we have, Madam Mayor, excuse me, a presentation or a quick update from our library, city librarian Leila Regan.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Krebs, Mayor Pro Tem Parkhurst and our honorable city council. I'm just here to say thank you for mentioning that the temporary library is open. We will have our regular library hours. So Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday are 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Thursday is 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And Saturday is 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And we will be closed Friday and Sundays, so that will continue. We do have some limitations, but they are temporary. We are waiting on some state issues to get sorted. So we will not have public Wi-Fi or public printing or public computers. But it is temporary. And I don't mean just like the library's temporary. It is temporary, it will get resolved hopefully within the next few months. So hopefully that'll be taken care of. Our programming is up and running. So our baby rhyme time, preschool story time, which happens on Mondays at 9:00 and 10:00 a.m., those are back. And they can be attended anytime, they're weekly on Mondays. We also have our One Book One City, which happens in February. So our One Book One City pick was Humankind: A Hopeful History by Rutger Brugman. I wish I had the book, but I don't, so you can pretend I have the book. But our One Book One City is happening in February. We have some wonderful programs lined up for that that I hope to give you more details on. They include hopefully a dinner with what's called the Human Library. They are a originally Dutch program where you get to "unjudge someone today" is their motto, and you get to check out a human book and have a courageous conversation with someone from a unique background. And we also hope to have a Red Cross blood drive and weekly donations. So donation drives. We are hoping that will come together soon and I will get you more information on One Book One City, but it is happening, we are having our programming back. We are relying a little bit more on other departments like community services and the Hart Park House to host some of our programs. But we're very excited to be finally open and "Haula Makikiho", which means "Happy New Year". Happy New Year, thank you.
Thank you, librarian Regan.
Madam Mayor? If I can just make a comment, I, I think it's just stunning what the library's been able to do. You know, I mean, we went from, when we were going to be creating a new library, just having a storefront, to having the Sierra Madre room, to now having the Bank of America. And the fact that we can have this amount of programming, this amount of offering, when we are revitalizing our library, is just, is just amazing. And not only are we having regular programs, but we're expanding programs. So, you know, I really applaud the work that you're doing and the enthusiasm and, you know, dealing with, you know, the, all of the challenges, a moving and being in a different location. So thank you for all those efforts.
Very well said, thank you. Madam Mayor, we don't have any other speaker cards, nor did the city clerk's office receive any emails. Great, thank you. So I think we're starting off tonight with a couple of presentations. I think we're starting with our Senior Commission, who would like to give an update on their activities. I think Chair Crock is making her way down.
To the left.
To come hip.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and honorable city council members. I'm Pat Croft, this year's chair of the Sierra Madre Senior Commission. And this is going to be our annual report for last year with a few things projected for this year. But firstly, I would like to introduce the commissioners for you. If you'll just wave. We have Commissioner Pat Holland, Commissioner Anita Thompson. Oh, they can wave.
We can wave back.
Commissioner Marlene Enmark and Commissioner Jackie Pergola. And if you were to total up all of the hours this combined group has spent on the Senior Commission, it's pretty close to 32 volunteer hours, or I'm sorry, 32 years of volunteer service, so. Let's see where we begin. I understand there's going to be a slideshow too?
I think they're coordinating.
Oh, okay, well, I'll just tap dance on my good leg for now. The Senior Commission meets once a month, the first Thursday of the month, 3:00, here at city council chambers. And anyone is invited to come and see what we do on our committee. The Senior Commission is challenged by the city of Sierra Madre to advise on the welfare and well-being of older Sierra Madre residents, which make up about 60% of our population. This is accomplished by publicizing available resources, the resource guide, which there are copies available in the parkhouse. We coordinate and initiate services and opportunities for the benefit of our seniors. The commission strives to improve and enhance the quality of older residents in our community. These efforts and activities are not done alone. The coordinated efforts of the Hart Park House and city staff, including administrative analyst Lauren Hines, administrative assistant Rosemary Garcia, recreation coordinator Ryan Lopez, community services- community services manager Rebecca Silva Barone, and our city manager Laura Aguilar, and our council liaison, now Mayor Protem, Robert Parkhurst. They have all supported and advised on our planning and coordinating. And in short, they make us look good and we thank you. When you review the senior moments at your leisure, you will get an idea of the programs and activities currently offered to the seniors in town. These programs are always being updated and new venues of information and activities are sought. Since our last presentation in 2022, we have been busy doing other things as well. The revised, the latest revised Senior Resource Guide has been provided. I forgot to bring them tonight, but we'll get them to you. And we have provided, the latest senior moments will also be provided to you. We're gearing up for a very busy year. The annual Older American of the Year saw a full house last May with Clem and Nina Bartoli being recipients. Hart Park House staff was also able to coordinate it, so Clem and Nina were able to participate in the Fourth of July parade. The Older American event has just now started planning again for this year. So please save the date. It's going to be on May eighth at the Park House. More information to follow. We are now scouting and recruiting to replace two of the Commissioners who will go off the Commissioner, the Commissioner, the Commission in June. Do we have any volunteers here? With the new Transportation Committee in swing, the Senior Commission is represented by two Commissioners, Jackie Pergola and Anita Thompson. Since 2016, the Commission has been full steam ahead to improve transportation for the seniors in town. SCC regularly attends city council meetings, speaking to relative relevance, activities and making announcements to the council and Sierra Madre at large. We also attend numerous activities in town sponsored by local organizations to meet and to make our presence known. From these meetings, we can pull together future programs for our group. This last fall, SCC held its annual holiday lunch extravaganza with over forty participants, music, entertainment, hot lunch dessert, and an opportunity drawing. The Hart Park House was decorated as a winter wonderland. Folks are still complimenting us on it. And those of you who were able to pop in, you noticed those wonderful big snowflakes hanging from the ceiling. Those were part of the December craft program. So next year, we're going to budget for sharper scissors so we can cut more. November saw the Senior Excursion Bus load up and head to Newport Beach for a tour of Rogers Garden, which decorates up for the holiday. And the drive down there was what, the six oh five to the four oh five to the fifty-five and all around through? There was enough time on the bus to do seven rounds of bingo, so that was fun. In December, the Senior Excursion Bus loaded up again and headed out to Rubell's Castle in Glendora. Future excursions are now in the works for this year. It is the goal of all the Senior Commissioners to remain healthy, mobile, and carry out our responsibilities to the City of Sierra Madre. Thank you, Mayor Krebs, Protem, Robert Parkhurst, council members for your support of the Senior Commission. Thank you.
Thank you so much for all the work that you do and thank you for that report.
You're welcome.
All right. That's a tough act to follow, City Attorney, but I know that you have Legislative Update Presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Mine won't be as exciting as that for sure. Is it possible to get the presentation up on this perfect? So this is, this is actually a three-part presentation, but today is just part one. For part one, we're going to be talking about bills related to administration and employment. Part two is going to talk about land use and housing. And part three is going to talk about public safety and public works. Next slide. So just a quick summary, the legislator introduced two thousand sixty-six bills and approved one thousand forty-six of them. October fourteenth was the last day for the governor to act on bills passed by the legislator. The Governor Newsom signed eight hundred ninety bills and vetoed a hundred fifty-six. So there are eight hundred ninety bills for our office and the League of California Cities to review and to figure out which of these are relevant to the city. So obviously, we haven't gotten to all of them. We're working through them as quickly as we can. And so here's going to be a summary of the top ten related to these two categories, administration and employment. Next slide. Okay, so the City of Sierra Madre's website is a dot com. In the near future, it'll be a dot gov, as will every single public agency in California. It's either going to be a dot ca.gov or a dot gov. The reason is, the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency within the Department of Homeland Security sponsors a dot gov top-level domain and makes it available solely to United States-based government organizations and publicly controlled entities. Dot gov increases security by enforcing multi-factor authentication on all accounts in the dot gov registrar, requiring browsers to only use a hypertext transfer protocol secure browser. So basically, it's a lot safer than using a dot com or a dot net or whatever other top-level domains there might exist out there. So by January first, twenty twenty-nine, we're going to have to make that transition, but I suspect that we'll make that transition earlier, working with the IT manager. Next slide. Elections. SP three eight six requires a city clerk to post or publish specified election information no later than three days before the deadline for the submission of nomination papers, including, so these are the things that have to be posted now, a list of the offices to be filled, whether the city elections official has furnished nomination papers to the incumbent for each open office, the location where nomination papers may be obtained, the location, date and hours of operation of the office where completed nomination papers may be filed. Brand-new requirement, I'm not sure if we do it, but we will, we will do it, working with the city clerk.
This is a, this is something that the city clerk's office has already been doing as a practice that we've already maintained and we don't look to change it. We will keep abreast of any changes in the law and we will update them as necessary, but we are already practicing this.
Mr. City Attorney, is there, is there any guidance on the modes of publishing? Is it similar to how we publish public hearings or?
It'll be on the city's website.
Okay.
Yeah. And as you'll see through the course of these three presentations, the legislator is looking to Sierra Madre for guidance and following the, following things we've adopted here in the city, that's a practice for us. AB three three four, conflicts of interest. So there's been a lot of confusion regarding when independent contractors are considered employees for purposes of conflict of interest. Existing law prohibits members of the board and certain officers and employees from being financially interested in any contract made by them in their official capacity. AB three three four clarifies when an independent contractor is not considered an officer, also provides an exemption where an independent contractor is an officer, and requires the city to include a disclaimer in its contracts with independent contractors. So our office will be updating the templates we use for these independent contractors to make sure that we have that disclaimer. And those individuals like, you know, the officers at Wildan, myself, who are independent contractors with the city, we've received, thanks to the legislator, additional clarity regarding when our decisions become employee decisions for purposes of conflict of interest analysis. Next slide. Political Reform Education Program. So under the Political Reform Act of nineteen seventy-four, it makes willful violations of criminal misdemeanor, makes willful violations a criminal misdemeanor and late campaign filings subject to an administrative fine of ten dollars per day. SP twenty-nine authorizes the Fair Political Practices Commission to establish a political reform education program as an alternative to administrative, civil or criminal proceedings, because they found that a lot of the people that were making these mistakes just weren't aware of the laws that existed on the books. So instead of penalizing them for it, at least during the first go-around, if they find, if they find some kind of error in the filing or if it's a late filing, I suspect what's going to happen is you're going to get a, an educational, you're going to be enrolled in an educational program. And then if the violations continue, then the administrative, civil or criminal proceedings will follow. Next slide. Teleconferencing. So during the pandemic, a new exception to the Brown Act was created. Teleconferencing for all council members. Currently, the default rule, we can allow teleconferencing on the council, but the majority of the body has to be physically present. That's the existing rule that's always existed under the Brown Act. During COVID, they allowed everyone to be remote. The legislator found that this was pretty popular and decided that they're going to keep this exemption under the, under the teleconferencing rules to allow everyone to be remote when there is a declared state of emergency and the city council makes the required findings. It was set to expire January twenty twenty-four, so it's been extended indefinitely. It is now part of the Brown Act. Next slide. Workplace Violence Prevention.
Next question. So what does it take to declare a state of emergency? So, you know, like, would the Bobcat Fire have been a state of emergency? I mean, it was, it was a state of emergency, but we probably could have met here. So what's the, I'm trying to wrap my head around, like, you know, we could declare a state of emergency or we could have an emergency, but still be able to meet. I'm, I'm, let me try to formulate my thought. When, can you give us an example of a state of emergency where we'd need to be remote?
So I believe it has to be a declared state of emergency. I have to check the statute to see whether it can be declared by the city council or whether that state of emergency has to be declared by some third party, like the governor's office or, or the public health officer. So that, that part I'm not clear on. I'd have to check. But when there is a declared state of emergency, the council may meet, and it can be in the case of a fire. So I remember during the Bobcat Fire, there was a declared state of emergency and the city council did meet remotely to address the issues that had to be addressed at the time.
Just to follow up on that, do you have knowledge if you can declare that state of emergency in a teleconference or do you have to meet as a, as a body live? Because it's kind of like the wag the dog, right? I mean, how do you, how do you do that if you can't get together and declare the state of emergency?
I can, I can check on this. I'll get back to the council.
Okay, thank you.
All right, perfect. Workplace violence. Existing law requires an employer to develop an injury prevention program and authorizes any employer whose employees suffered unlawful violence or a credible threat of violence from any individual to seek a temporary restraining order on behalf of an employee. So this is intended to have employers protect their employees. FB five five three requires employers to keep a violent incident log, which is a new requirement, adopt a workplace violence prevention plan, also a new requirement, and conduct training regarding workplace violence prevention. Now, this workplace violence prevention training is going to be wrapped up in the sexual harassment prevention training, so it's not going to be a new training, but just a new module in existing training. It's effective January first, twenty twenty-five, so one year from, almost one year from today. And SP five five three extends the right to seek a temporary, I'm sorry. Those, those requirements that I read off are effective today. But effective January first, twenty twenty-five, SP five five three extends the right to seek a temporary restraining order to a collective bargaining unit's representative. So in this scenario, where the employee feels that the employer is not representing their interest and they don't feel safe, they can go, go to their collective bargaining unit's representative and say, "Seek a temporary restraining order on my behalf." Next slide. Temporary Public Employees. AB fourteen eighty-four requires temporary employees to be automatically included in bargaining units if they perform the same or similar type of work performed by permanent employees, but does not require the same terms and conditions as permanent employees. AB fourteen eighty-four requires the local agency to participate in collective bargaining to establish certain employment conditions for newly added temporary employees, unless already addressed in the MOU. I don't know if our existing MOUs address this issue, so that's going to be a question for our Human Resources Director. AB fourteen eighty-four requires the local agency to provide new, the new hire with a job description, wage rates, eligibility for benefits, anticipate the length of employment, end of date of employment and procedures to apply for open, permanent positions. Temporary employee means a temporary, it means statutorily, a temporary employee, casual employee, seasonal employee, periodic employee, relief employee, limited-term employee, per deemed employee. And it does not include temporary employees hired through a temp, a temp agency, a temp service.
Mr. City Attorney, how does this affect, let's say, retired, annuitant type of employees?
It also does not apply to retired and newtons.
Thank you.
Can you help explain what a retired and newt is?
A retired and newton is someone who's part of the PERS program already, who's vested and has retired, but decides to come back into the labor force and work for a public agency.
With restricted hours.
With restricted hours. Next slide. Paid sick leave accrual. This doesn't matter so much for Sierra Madre, but matters a lot probably for private employers. And the reason it doesn't apply that much for Sierra Madre is because, as you can see, our existing personnel rules satisfy the requirements and in, in some instances exceed the requirements under SP six one six. So this won't be requiring any amendments to our MOUs most likely or our personnel rules, but this will matter for private employers. This, this applies to, I believe, all employers with five or more employees. Next slide. So last year, the legislator adopted bereavement leave, gave all employees, employees up to five days of unpaid bereavement leave for, upon death of a family member. SP eight four eight allows bereavement leave to be used for reproductive loss event. Reproductive loss events mean a failed adoption, failed surrogacy, miscarriage, stillbirth, or an unsuccessful assisted reproduction. So if, if one of these things happened to you, now the employee can use up to five days of unpaid bereavement leave. This does not include a voluntary abortion, which is a question that comes up. So this is, this applies only to those one, two, three, four, five examples above. Next slide. And the last slide in this presentation, SP seven hundred. SP seven hundred prohibits decisions to not hire, terminate or impose conditions on an employee for off-duty use of cannabis. Employer cannot request information from an applicant relating to the applicant's prior use of cannabis. Information about a person's prior cannabis use obtained from the person's criminal history is exempt. So therefore, it can be used. SP seven hundred does not permit an employee to possess, be impaired by or use cannabis on the job or within a certain proximity of the place of employment. And SP seven hundred does not preempt testing requirements under state or federal law, usually for drivers of heavy-duty vehicles.
Is that the only exemption?
That isn't the only exemption. There are other exemptions. I just tried to highlight the main ones.
Public safety.
There, there are, this does apply to public safety. SP seven hundred does apply to public safety personnel. But there are more exemptions from SP seven hundred for public safety hiring and termination.
So SP seven hundred doesn't preempt testing requirements, so you can test for it, so you can find out if, if someone has, an applicant has used cannabis through the testing.
Right, because under, for example, under federal law, for people who drive heavy-duty vehicles, Right, because under, for example, under federal law, for people who drive heavy-duty vehicles, they can't be under the, they can't even, I believe they can't even use it off-duty under federal law. And so to, to be licensed as a person who's going to use a heavy-duty vehicle.
So you, so then you,
You'd have to comply.
you can't, so, so that, then that prohibition doesn't apply in, in that case.
Right, and I, and I believe it also doesn't apply to construction workers.
Got it.
Uh, there are a number of exemptions.
Got it, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. So, moving on from presentations, we will move toward our consent calendar. Uh, Madam City Clerk, would you like to, the consent items by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this evening, the city council is being asked to consider resolution twenty four dash zero one. It is a resolution approving certain demands. City Council is being asked to adopt and approve city council warrants in the aggregate amount of one million, five hundred seventy-two thousand, sixteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. On the library side, library warrants in the aggregate amount of four thousand, nine hundred seventy-two dollars and sixty-five cents. And lastly, payroll transfer in the aggregate amount of five hundred eleven thousand, four hundred thirteen dollars and thirty-two cents. All this for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Madam Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Um, for the council, do we have any questions on our one consent item this evening?
Madam Mayor, just,
Yes, please.
just some clarification, just for, maybe for edification of the public. There are two big, pretty big ticket items on the warrants, so I think we should bring those just to light. Um, one being Christensen Brothers General Engineering for eight hundred, five thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars and sixty-one cents. Uh, Mr. City Manager, could you enlighten us on what that was?
That is for the downtown sidewalk improvement projects and the water main and street improvements downtown.
Thank you. And how did it become relative to budget?
Uh, that project came in, I, I believe it was under budget. Uh, and our director can give us that amount.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, good evening. Uh, yes, sir. Uh, within budget, uh, there were some, uh, issues that did, did arise during the, during the, the construction project, like any project, but those matters were, were, were addressed.
So even with the change order, um, at the end of Hermosa and the kind of reconfiguring of the southwest, or southeast corner of,
Southeast corner.
of, of the project, that we're still, we're still good there?
That, that, that is correct, sir.
Okay, great. That's good news. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then also there was another big ticket item, uh, to the Los Angeles City Clerk, four hundred twenty-four thousand, two hundred eighteen dollars and fifteen cents.
Councilmember Garcia, that was for the special elections, uh, and the city clerk can expand on that?
Mr. Mayor, uh, the city clerk's office received an estimate December twenty twenty-three estimating the election to come in at approximately three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, the invoice that we received from the county clerk's office came in in December, just last month, and it came in for almost, uh, one hundred thousand dollars over the estimate. In my discussion with the city clerks, with the county clerk's office, it was explained to me that there were a number of printing cost issues that were associated with the number of, with the number of pages in the voter information guide and that substantially increased the esti- where the estimate was. Um, and, and that is due to the state's adoption of requirements due to COVID laws and, and our increase, the increase in postage as it relates to the new laws that stem from COVID and every voter must receive now a, a specific number of information from the county clerk's office and from the city clerk's office in addition to, uh, the ballots that went out. So that's why there was a significant increase.
Okay.
Uh, City Manager, may I ask a question? Um, where does that funding come from? Where, how does our city pay for that?
So the, the, the funding would come from the general fund. Uh, we did have, um, a negotiated agreement with, uh, New Urban, uh, with Newey, the developer. Um, the, the city would pay two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, of the total estimate, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, New Urban West would, uh, participate with one hundred thousand dollars and anything over three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So the cities, uh, of, of the total invoice, the city's responsibility is obligated to pay two hundred and twenty-five thousand and New Urban, uh, is about one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, uh, and some change.
Is that budgeted in our?
So we, we do operate on a zero-based budget, um, so that was not a budgeted item.
So where does that money come from?
That will come from a budget amendment from our general fund.
Basically out of reserves then?
Correct.
Any other questions?
Or do you? Comment, but I don't, can we comment? I, pretty expensive election.
Yeah, we can.
Almost.
Special election.
Pretty expensive election.
So let's, let's do public comment first, then we can come back and, and discuss. Uh, Madam City Clerk, were there any, uh, comment cards or emails on this item?
Neither, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, so I will now entertain commentary.
I don't.
Please.
I don't have anything else to say. It, it's just, you know, it's, it's tough, you know, we could use those resources for more productive things in the city.
Certainly. And I just recalled that near the end of that discussion, we had a date that we could have pulled and, not us. Uh, one member could have pulled a date, one member of a group could have pulled the special election and saved the city three hundred and, what was the total amount? It's two hundred and,
Two, two twenty-five.
Two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
What, what is that? I mean, if we've got, uh, can you give us a ballpark of what that represents, like, you know, in, in costs? Like, is that two police officers for a year or, I mean, I, I don't know. I don't know if it's easy to do ballpark right now, but I'm just trying to wrap my head around that. I mean, it's, it's gotta be several employees.
I, I think if, I, I mean, something that, that would be easy to, to understand or see is, um, our police department is in need of replacement vehicles and, and that could have replaced two police vehicles.
Two police vehicles. Thank you.
So that's a, it's a reason for having reserves, um, when things like this happen. Uh, going forward, you know, obviously this wouldn't happen every, every year hopefully. Um, but, um, yeah, as far as the budget's concerned, we, we should be in good shape, decent shape. This doesn't keep happening.
Correct.
Thank you.
With that, I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
Move to approve.
Second. Thank you. All those, uh, in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. I keep forgetting to vote. I have to call for the vote for that matter. Um, motion pass. Um, all right, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing related to the adoption of resolution twenty four dash zero five and authorization to establish the minor home rehabilitation program or the Pepe MHRP program.
Mayor, uh, Planning Manager Claire Lynn will be presenting.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. So the public hearing before you this evening is to establish the senior minor home rehabilitation program utilizing CDBG funding. The Community Development Block grant, the CDBG program has operated since nineteen seventy-four to provide local governments with resources to meet the needs of low and moderate income persons. City of Sierra Madre contracted with Los Angeles County Development Authority to disperse the CDBG fund. For years, CDBG fund has been used to make meaningful improvements throughout the city. Most recently, as a part of the nationwide COVID-nineteen response, the grant was offered to, um, our small business owners in town. So for this fiscal year appropriation, CDBG was identified in our certified housing element towards the establishing, the grant program for minor home improvement for the low-income seniors to, to preserve housing assets. As many of our seniors may have difficulty maintaining their house, the scope of work include but not limited to ADA RAMs, grid bars, or shower conversions or roof repairs or plumbing repairs. With Sierra Madre's sizable senior citizen population, this program can help assist seniors with minor home repairs that could support them to age in place. This fiscal year, city was allocated forty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars and was required to meet the drawdown requirement up to one hundred and fifty percent, which equals to sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. The total accumulated amount that you see in the running balance is one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and fourteen. Those were a running balance, but city is required to allocate the sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and four. CDBG grant will cover one hundred percent of the funding for three income-qualified senior homeowners earning less than eighty percent of the area median income, allocating the seventeen thousand, two hundred and fifty per household and direct up to twenty percent of the grant, which equals to four thousand, three hundred and thirteen for consulting services for each project. The scope of work for the consulting consultant would include, um, CDBG LA County quarterly reporting, qualifying the applicant and also qualifying the contractor and all the necessary document for the grant reimbursement. So the total appropriation for the grant is sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and four dollars annually, which will meet the drawdown requirement of the LACDA for our city. An off-cycle notice for this public hearing was posted at City Hall, at the Senior Center, and also on our city website. So alternative before the city council this evening is to adopt resolution twenty four dash zero five authorizing the city manager to revise the CDBG housing program and issue a request for proposal for the consultant services. Or s- city council may decline the adoption of the resolution twenty four dash zero five or city council may direct staff to return with additional information. Staff is recommending that the city council adopt resolution twenty four dash zero five authorizing city manager to, um, revise the consolidated action plan establishing the minor home rehabilitation program for the seniors and issue the RFP for consulting services. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Planning Manager Lynn. Um, is there any questions, uh, from the presentation from the council?
Madam Mayor, just one, one question. Thank you, Manager Lynn. Uh, great, nice, clean, clear, brief agenda report. Um, I like that. Um, but I do, I do have a question and it, it probably has to do with, with the state law. I mean, it's obvious the forty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-six times one point five equals the sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. So there's a hundred and fifty percent drawdown. I'm just curious what, what, what's the catalyst for a hundred and fifty percent drawdown? Because we, we do have a hundred and thirty-six thousand and change in reserve balance. Let's say we didn't have reserve balance, would we still have to meet a, a drawdown of a hundred and fifty percent? Could you kind of explain that component?
Yeah, those were the, um, rules that imposed on us from the LA County CDA. Um, it is because we don't have a current project or current exhibit A in place. So for the next year, um, if we have a current project in place or continuation of this program, then we do not have to meet the drawdown requirement.
Okay, is there, is there a requirement to, to grant, to, let's say the grant was fifty thousand next year, would we be required to disperse the whole fifty? Or can reserves kind of build up again, as long as we have a plan in place?
Yeah, so if we, um, have this program in place, then for the next year, we only are required to need the allocation of the fifty. But, um, we would recommend that the city continue this program for the entire planning cycle for the housing element and qualifying three seniors every year consistently.
Thank you, Manager Lynn.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, please.
So I, I had two questions. Uh, on slide three, so we have the homeowner and the consultant. So does that mean, what's the difference between the homeowner and the consultant and what are they, what are the roles and what are each of them doing?
So the first column is the homeowner, um, the amount that will given to the homeowner for the repair program, the actual cost. Um, so if a senior qualified, um, with their income, there will be granted seventeen thousand, two hundred and fifty-two. And the consultant services of the twenty percent of the grant that will cover the reporting for each seniors and the reimbursement for the grant.
So the reporting to the state then? So the, it costs four thousand dollars for someone to report seventeen thousand dollars worth of, of repairs? Is that, is that essentially what it's saying?
So, um, the program only allow consultant fee to be up to twenty percent.
Okay, so, so that, so you were allowed up to that, that's the, those, those are the caps. Okay. Great. Um, I had a second question and this has left me. Um, so yeah, I'll, I'll leave it there.
Councilmember Lo?
Um, I have a quick question. How, I, I know that you said we publicize it by putting it at the city hall and at the senior center. How have we previously found our recipients? Are they seniors we already know about? Do we reach out to them? Do they usually reach out to us? How does that usually happen?
So this is a brand-new program.
Oh, okay. I thought we had that.
We haven't implemented before. So, um, we were thinking about reaching out to the senior committee and also senior center or anyone that would recommend, you know, a senior household that in need of repair qualify for this.
Madam Mayor, I remember my, my question. So, so was this part of the, this wasn't part of what we had in the housing element? We, we, or, or was it part of, of what we, of our adopted housing element?
Yeah, so this is a part of our adopted housing element that identified the program for the seniors because, um, senior population is a sizable population in Sierra Madre, accounts up to twenty percent of our population.
Got it. I think that creates one more question. Does, does this, because we only get a few, uh, general plan amendments per year, does this qualify as a general plan amendment?
This is not a general plan amendment. This is implementation of the existing program under the general plan.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Um, so we will open this up for public comment. Um, any cards or emails for this topic?
Neither, Madam Mayor.
All right, so any discussion back to the council?
I think it's a great program.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's all I can say. Um, it's grant money and it's helping our residents, um, maintain their homes and I, hopefully, we're, we're able to allocate these funds. Uh, we got tax, taxpayers' dollars back in the city for our residents. I always, always like when we see programs like that.
Yeah, and I, I like the fact that, that it's allocating some funds, although, albeit maybe not the full twenty percent to offset, you know, uh, the burden on our staff. Um, because one of the, you know, limitations we have with the, the size of our city and the size of our staff is we'd like to do lots of programming and lots of, lots of things to help our residents, but we are limited, um, by the people that we, by the number of hours our people can work. And so I, I like that this comes with a component to not overburden, um, our existing staff. Anything else? All right, well then, on that note, I will entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty four dash zero five.
I move that we adopt resolution twenty four oh five and authorize to establish the minor home rehabilitation program.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we have three items on our discussion agenda. Um, the first is consideration of modification to Title II of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code regarding the number of commissioners for the planning commission.
Madam Mayor.
I think we.
Oh, did I skip something?
Yeah.
Anonymous donation is the.
Oh. It's the one that is on the amended here.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Sorry, wrong order. I suppose we could have done that first. Sorry, we're discussing the ten thousand dollar anonymous donation given to the Sierra Madre Police and Fire Departments.
Madam Mayor and our Fire Chief Bartlett will be presenting on this item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Honorable City Council. Happy New Years. It's my pleasure to actually present on this one. This is, basically, on behalf of public safety, both Fire Department and Police Department, I would like to express our sincere gratitude for the anonymous donor who has generously supported our mission. Their selfless contribution enables us to acquire vital equipment and resources, empowering our personnel to carry out their duties more effectively. And with their support, we can enhance our capabilities to ensure the safety of our community. We'd like to thank them for being an essential partner in our community, allowing us to continue our commitment to serve and protect. Therefore, staff recommends to ratify city's acceptance of the ten thousand dollar donation.
Thank you, Chief.
Here to answer any questions.
Anybody have questions, other than the obvious one, which we will not answer?
Was this the first time we've had a donation, an anonymous donation?
No, it is not. We are very fortunate that we do get quite a few donations from the community. But this particular one, I'm not sure if it's the same person or not, but in the past, previous year, we received a ten thousand dollars for public safety as well. And two years prior, were a hundred thousand dollars each, excuse me, two hundred thousand dollars, but a hundred thousand dollars to each fire and police for two consecutive years prior to that. So those allow us to do quite a bit in augmenting the budget. But usually, we put that towards capital and some things that are, some of the higher-priced items that really, like I said, alleviate a lot of the burden on the city's budget. So they're very much appreciated.
Agreed. Anybody else?
I don't remember from previous years, did we get a report on where we spent the money in those? I seem to remember we did. When would you give us, it'd be great to know and be able to share where this money gets spent. When would you be able to provide us with, you and the Police Department give us an idea of where this anonymous donor's money helped out the most?
Absolutely. For Fire Department side, I can absolutely answer that question. And even going back to the previous donations, the first hundred thousand dollars on the Fire Department side, we used towards the purchase of the new fire engine. The second, we acquired a utility vehicle on the Fire Department side, which probably was about sixty percent of that donation, at least. And then last year's donation, we used it for a lot of wellness-type of stuff for our members. And this particular donation for this year will go to the same. We have some gym equipment that needs to get replaced, so to keep the wellness of our members going, we're probably going to look at putting it in that direction.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, so I will ask if there is any public comment on this discussion item?
Madam Mayor, I did not receive any request for public comment. Thank you.
So I'll bring it back to council for discussion. I mean, again, this is a good thing, right?
Just a comment. I don't know who you are, anonymous donor, if you're the same one, but since I think a few of us have been on the council, it's been over four hundred thousand dollars in anonymous donations to our public safety. Getting a little teary-eyed, but thank you. The generosity is well-received, and we're forever grateful for your generosity. Thank you.
You're here.
Very well said.
I think this is one of the things that makes this community so great and honored to serve. I mean, you've got people that are really stepping up and putting things back into it, putting not only volunteer time that we have for so many people, but financial contributions like this. So thank you, whoever you are.
Very much. On that note, I will entertain a motion to ratify the acceptance of the anonymous donation.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right, so now, consideration of modification to Title II of the Municipal Code regarding the number of commissioners for the Planning Department.
Madam Mayor and Planning Manager Carolyn will be reporting.
Thank you.
Mayor and members of council, the discussion before you is the modification for Title II related to the numbers of commission for the Planning Commission. So in twenty twenty, in twenty twenty, the city council adopted ordinance fourteen twenty-nine requiring all commissions to consist of no more than five members. The rationale was to address prolonged vacancy on commissions, giving the difficulty in soliciting the required numbers of applicants. At the November meeting, Councilmember Goss agendized this item and would like to revisit the discussion of expanding the Planning Commission and to address the concern of canceling meeting due to lack of quorum. So with some research, staff found that in twenty seventeen, when the commission had a seven-member structure, the Planning Commission had three canceled meetings. And in twenty twenty-two, one meeting was canceled due to lack of quorum. I would like to point out that there is error in the staff report, and this table wasn't included. The staff report says twenty twenty-three, it should be twenty twenty-two. In a seven-member commission, the quorum is established when four of the seven member are present. And in a five-member commission, quorum is established when three of the five member are present. Whether it's a five-member commission or a seven-member commission, it carries both disadvantage and advantage, and each deserving careful consideration. So staff have listed a few topics for your discussion. The advantage of expanding the Planning Commission to a seven-C can offer a great diversity of expertise and perspective, likelihood of tapping into a broader range of knowledge, experiences, skills, or potentially lead to a more well-rounded decision-making. This diversity can be beneficial when addressing complex and multifaceted issues, as different viewpoint can contribute to more comprehensive solution. It also enhances the representation and inclusivity, ensuring a wide array of stakeholders' interest and are taking into account. However, in twenty twenty, staff experienced difficulties in filling vacancies for the seven-member commission. And it impacted project city business license when meeting were canceled or postponed. So the disadvantage of a large commission or prolonged application process to fill the vacancy, and also more extensive discussion leads to a longer meeting and their ability to reach a conclusion timely. Logistically, it's also hard to schedule and coordinate, impeding overall effectiveness. And it is inconsistent with city's board and commission's structure. The current five-member commission presents advantages for streamlined decision-making process, often facilitated, more efficient discussion and deliberation, enabling a quicker dissolution or resolutions to pressing issues, minimal logistic challenges when scheduling and coordinating. It also promotes agility and responsiveness in addressing commissions' mandate. It also, the smaller commission foster a stronger sense of individual accountability as each member's contribution and decisions are readily identifiable. So the five-C structure also remain consistent structure across all appointed board and commissions, eliminating the prolonged vacancies. One significant disadvantage of the five-member commission is the potential limitation of diverse perspective and expertise of the commissioners, inadvertently exclude certain stakeholders' interest. And so balancing the needs for efficiency with imperative to diversity perspective becomes a critical challenge. I also have additional information for the council. Staff surveyed the neighboring city on the numbers of planning commissions. City of Arcadia have five members, Bradbury, South Pasadena, San Marino all have five members for their planning commission. Monrovia has seven members, and Pasadena has eight. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Planning Manager Lynn. Does anyone have any questions, while? Yes, please.
Great report. So I remember back in twenty twenty, it was really rough, really rough, trying to recruit anybody. Have we, has that improved at all? I think we haven't appointed someone to the Planning Commission since then, haven't we?
I'll defer that to city clerk.
Have we?
Councilmember Goss, the Planning Commission is currently complete at the moment. We do not have any anticipated vacancies coming.
We haven't had any since twenty twenty.
We have, and we've had, and the city council has made appointments since then. We fortunately were in a position where we received multiple applications to fill two vacancies. And so the city council was able to fill a upcoming vacancy that wasn't expected for another six months when Commissioner Hutt came off. And so at that time, Christine Moran was appointed to serve in the July first, as of July first. So we were in that position to appoint all the applicants that were received.
So it'd be fair to say, in recent years, that we have not had the difficulty we'd had in twenty twenty recruiting people for the Planning Commission?
With the change in circumstances, we have not had any difficulty recruiting.
It's been five.
In the Planning Commission. That is correct for the Planning Commission. It is not necessarily correct for all the other commissions, but it is for the Planning Commission at this time.
Can I ask a follow-up on that, because it's on a similar topic? I think there's been reference a couple of times to whether it's a protocol or an actual requirement about having more applications than vacancies. Can you expand a little bit on that? Is that an actual requirement in our code? Or is that just been kind of the protocol and the procedure that prior councils have followed?
It is a requirement of the municipal code to have two applications for a vacancy. The city council can, in their, under their purview, make a selection to reduce that at a council meeting. They can have a discussion to accept applications. In more recent years, we've had for other commissions exactly the number of applications for the vacancies. And so that puts the city council in a position where they either have to appoint the one applicant, or continue the recruitment for additional applicants. Another consideration, and we heard this from one of the commissioners today, is we are, we have extended our city's recruitment for commissioners, which has alleviated some of that pressure. But we are now entering the new year, and we are six months away from our commissioners, some commissioners terming out, and we haven't received any applications, specifically for the Senior Community Commission, which is expecting two vacancies. And we have been recruiting for that position for some months now.
Now, that wasn't listed on our website either, though, correct? That wasn't advertised, that we have those openings?
Those get advertised through the senior moments, and they get advertised through the commission meetings. The commissioners are, have been actively recruiting for vacancies.
But it's not listed on our public website?
I don't, I'd have to look into that.
Anyone else?
Question. So, kind of going back to our last round of appointments, considering we had five on the Planning Commission, I think we received four applications, and we ultimately filled three spots out of those, with those four applications. So if we would have been at seven at that point in time, I know the answer, but would we have had enough to fill all seven?
Well, depending on the number of vacancies, most likely no. At that point, we had two vacancies at that time, and one upcoming vacancy. If we were at seven, we would have, depending on where they were on their terms, potentially two additional vacancies, and we would not have had enough applications.
How many vacancies are we expected to have on the Planning Commission this year?
I believe one, but I'd have to double-check that.
A second question. This is for, Senator Lynn. So one of the things that you said in your presentation, it's in the staff report, was to have a range of skills, knowledge, and experiences. Are there, do we have any requirements for knowledge, skills, or experiences for the Planning Commission?
Do you mean like expressed, like in the code?
Right. Yeah, do we have any requirements? Do we have to have? With some boards and commissions, you have to have, you know, some member from the public and some member that has architectural background, and some member that has, you know, building experience. Or I don't know exactly what it is, but different commissions will sometimes have to have certain, certain spots have to be filled certain ways. Do we have any of those requirements for the Planning Commission?
Presently, there are no qualifications as there would be with, within like a job, for example, for employment. The requirements include their living or working, having a vested interest in the community, but no either educational or employment-type requirements, or academic requirements.
Do other cities have any requirements for any of the general positions or specific positions on their commissions?
Those requirements do exist in some cities, but not consistently throughout all cities.
Got it. Can you give us an example of like a Planning Commission, off the top of your head, if you happen to know? I know you're.
I couldn't tell you a specific city, but just based on the research that we have conducted in the past for previous agenda reports, we have identified some cities requiring that they live in the city, that they have some background that's related to the planning and economic growth for the city.
Are there any skills to you, Manager Lynn? Are there any skills or knowledge that you can think that we're missing on the commission? Are there things that would be helpful to making decisions, helpful for making better, having better discussion with the Planning Commission?
I think from our planning commissioners, it's actually pretty well-rounded on, you know, their backgrounds and their expertise, and where they are located, where they, who they represent. So it's usually from the past experiences, it's all pretty well-rounded.
Thank you. I think I have a couple of questions. So thinking about, let's say, a project, and I don't recall, when somebody has to recuse themselves, what is the radius? So if we're thinking about dispersion of residents and where they live, what's the radius where you have to recuse oneself on a project?
I'll defer to city attorney.
It's between five hundred and a thousand feet. Five hundred is the hard cutoff. So if you're within five hundred feet, you're definitely being, you definitely have to recuse. If you're between five hundred and a thousand, we have to do some analysis to determine whether or not you have to recuse. And then beyond a thousand, you're okay.
Okay, thank you. And my second question, and I'm not trying to jump over any public comment, but I didn't receive any email public comment regarding this topic. And I only see one former commissioner here in the gallery. But did you, have you received any feedback from current commissioners on their opinions on pros and cons, and what they prefer?
I have not received anything from the current commissioners.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question then. In the comparisons with the other cities, I noticed the number. Do the other cities have term limits, like Sierra Madre does? Because our city council doesn't have a term limit. We can run for as many terms as we like. But we have a term limit for the Planning Commission and other commissions for only two terms, excluding if it's, you know, a part-time, like someone left and they're hovering over the rest of one term, and then they basically have eight years. Do we, do other cities have term limits on their commissioners as well?
I can try to answer that one. So I'll start by saying that. So I'll start by saying that unlike other commissions, the planning commission is statutorily authorized, required in fact. So the only two commissions or boards that exist below the city council that are required in statute are the planning commission and the library trust, the board of library trustees. Under the government code, the only requirement for a planning commission is that A, they consist of at least five members. And B, they not have the conflicts of interest that were discussed earlier. Other than that, there are no limitations and there are, there definitely are other planning commissions that don't have, in other cities that don't have term limits.
Because that, you know, with, as long as projects last, I'm, I'm just asking, I wonder if that's changed over time. You know, how, how long things are drawn out now versus before. I wonder if that's an issue because I notice, you know, if we have people terming out, of course we have vacancies. Whereas before, they might not have a vacancy. So I didn't know if other cities use the term limits or not.
You know, in our past discussions, back when we made the decision to go from seven to five, that never even came up, this idea that maybe we could mess around with the, the terms and maybe extend them or, or get rid of them. That's a very interesting option.
Any other questions?
I had one, but I lost it.
Regarding this last past year with how many instances we had with commissioners that had to excuse themselves from making decisions, were there, were there instances where we had a time where we were missing commissioners or we had, almost didn't have a quorum on decisions and had to table those decisions for a later time due to the fact that we had too many commissioners missing slash had to excuse themselves from being able to? Because some of us live right next to each other. That would, that would put us out of, if we couldn't vote on something in our neighborhood, we wouldn't be able to have a quorum. So has that happened this last year?
For the past year, 2023, we did have some absences, but it did not lead to, you know, cancel meetings or lead to table the topic for a later time.
Um, not the absences, I'm sorry. Members of the commission, the commissioners having to excuse themselves from being able to vote because they lived within proximity of 500 feet of a project.
We do have a few.
We did have that, thank you.
Let me follow up on, on that. Do we have a requirement for attendance? You know, with, with some boards and commissions, you, you, you can't get your next term or you may get thrown off if you don't have a certain attendance rate. Do we have anything like that? I, I don't know, maybe that's a City Clerk question. Do, do we have a, an attendance requirement?
Mayor Protem Parkers, the city's municipal code is silent to that. The commissioners are, are subject to reappointment at the conclusion of their first term and the, and the city council may at that time evaluate the performance of each commissioner that is up for reappointment. But in terms of, of absences or, or there, how many meetings they are required to attend, the city's municipal code is apps, is silent on that matter.
And if I'm, just, just on that same topic, if I'm not mistaken, there is an actual procedure for removal and presumably criteria for removal could be, for example, lack of attendance. And is that correct? We wouldn't have to wait until the end of someone's term?
That is correct. That, that is absolutely correct. What, what I meant was that there isn't a clear number definition and whereas, you know, you missed two meetings and you're out, for example. So that, the municipal code doesn't address that.
Thank you.
And have the absences in the past year been different than it has been in previous years? Is the trend any different than, 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 and I, I don't expect you to know that answer because you, you haven't, I'm just asking now, you haven't had time to research it. But is there a, a trend in the absences?
Are you referring straight across the board with, within all the commissions and boards or just the planning commission?
I just want to focus planning commission for this question, yes.
So I, I defer then to Planning Manager Lynn.
Yeah, that I will have to get back to you and do some research on that regarding the trend.
Okay.
Any further questions?
Madam Mayor?
Sure.
So the language, and I have the strike through, I think, of old language on 2.44.020-hyphen membership, says the planning commission of this city shall consist a total of seven members. Do we have any authorization to say may consist of seven members? Because let's say we, we, we want up to seven members, but we don't get enough applications? Or let's say the mayor feels maybe one or two, we've had great applicants, but let's say one or two of the applications isn't really meeting the criteria for the position. We still want, we still want and need a planning commission. So could we do something like that?
It's, it's a difficult question because I think we, we bump up against the Brown Act. The Brown Act, there are rules that govern, that apply to the quorum of the body and there are rules that apply to the quorum of those present. Now, that's the first question, the quorum of the body, how is that to be determined? So are you suggesting that the quorum of the body be those appointed at whatever time?
That's my question, yeah.
Yeah. I, I don't know. I'd have to research that question. I'm not sure if that's ever been done because in every municipal code I've seen, they designate a certain number and say, this is the core, this is the number of members in this body. And it's never been tied to the number of appointees to that body. Does that distinction make sense?
It does, yes.
I mean, I can say, under non-municipal corporate law, you definitely can set it either way. Either it's a certain percentage of the maximum amount allowed or it can be, you know, a certain percentage of the actual then, you know, then appointed or then serving members.
And I've served on boards where up to is, is, and then it's a, it's a quorum of the body.
Right. Yeah, I, I will, I will look into this and I'll report back.
Okay. Any other questions before we move to public comment? Okay, public comment, Madam, Madam City Clerk.
It appears that we have a member of the audience that would like to speak.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council, distinguished staff. My name is Bob Spears. And I believe that the 2020 city council ordinance, 2029, that mandated all city commissions be composed of five members was not a well-reasoned decision. I've heard people say that it relieves the city council members of finding enough qualified commissioners, but ignores the complex jobs of the planning commission. Not all commissions are the same. As a former planning commissioner, I have experienced and seen the time it takes for a new commissioner to fully understand the many elements at play in making a decision. Sierra Madre has specific laws, codes and rules that each commissioner needs to know. The planning commission must follow a specific process and be very careful about the content of their discussions. I was always aware that any misstep could cost the city money in a lawsuit. All that training is done on the job. Please be aware that the applicants, the applicants, namely the developers, are usually not our local neighbors looking to add a bathroom or a bedroom. Instead, they are professional people who appear with savvy architects, lawyers and spokespeople, who are always looking to get forgiveness from our requirements so that they can turn a profit. A new planning commissioner is at a distinct advantage unless maybe they work as a professional urban planner. Every decision sets a precedent and changes the appearance of our town. The planning commission gets to decide how our town will appear in the future. Will it stay the same or will it change? And if so, how? These decisions should be made by the most diverse and qualified group possible. I was aware that, that a commission of only five members could not always feel the combined brain trust needed to stand up to professional opponents. Five members does not always allow for the various points of view and expertise needed to understand how each development would impact the town. I thought I knew the town pretty well, but I was constantly reminded by my fellow commissioners about how some developments would change the nature of a neighborhood. Seven members gives the commission the ability to represent the whole town. A commission of five mem, five members does not allow for the sudden changes due to personal events. When a commissioner suddenly retires before the end of the term, the timing makes the commission's job much more challenging. The ability to perform subcommittees are impacted, the quorum is different and the representation of a diverse set of opinion shrink. If you have to look back no further than the Meadows projects to see the importance of the work of the planning commission, the necessity of having enough trained, invested members who understand the arguments both for and against, and commissioners who have the experience to stand up to the insults and harassment of the opponents and still try to get, get the best outcome for the city. Please remember that the impact of a commissioner who left, and which is what happened, left on the, on the middle of the process, of the review process. I want to remind you that at the end, in the Meadows project, the vote to approve was made by just three commissioners because that's all there were in the room. I ask you to please give us the best team possible and the largest team possible to go up against the people who want to use our town to make money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spears. Any other comment?
I don't believe so, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So I will bring it back for discussion. Anybody like to start it off? Can I just say something because I'm on the planning commission as liaison right now? I did get some feedback from the current planning commission as we asked before and it was diverse. It was, there was pros and cons to both. One thing that did come up though, is that the current chairperson, Tom Dennison, is the, the longest standing one to, in the next year, when one more commissioner retires out, he's going to be the only one that's been there for longer than one year. The rest are all brand new at that point, which means that they have no experience with what happened with the last development projects, with anything that's been going on, they're all new. And so that was an issue with, with training is that everyone else termed out pretty much around the same time or had to retire earlier or leave earlier. And so that, that, that diversity is now new commissioners and one person that's been there for a long period of time. And the idea being, because I, I don't know that expanding to seven necessarily changes that if we still have sort of the same kind of rotation. Is the idea that then you'd have a more of a, like, not currently, because this would not solve this problem, like in the next year or two, but, but in the future that we would have more staggered terms and so there'd be more continuity?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, because honestly, just to engage, and I'll let others comment, you know, what I, what I'm hearing and, and from Mr. Spears as well, and then I did some discussion with prior commissioners as well, part of me wonders if the problem either is also solved by or augmented by, I don't know if it's an either or, by the question we were talking about earlier, whether there is, you know, either a longer term or more, more consecutive terms. I mean, because it, the, the point about, you know, the, the, the ramp up process and the training, that to me does not, is not alleviated by in, in increasing the number of commissioners. To me, that's about timing and maybe, maybe the term is longer or maybe there's something for particular projects where, you know, folks stay on beyond their, their
We did.
statutory time so that they can see a project through so that the history and the continuity isn't lost.
Research basin.
So anyway, just that's, that's my reaction to that. And then the other thing that did come up from the current planning commission was that there were instances, like, like we said, where it wasn't just the absences, it's one person's absent, one person doesn't qualify to, able to, to vote or discuss because it's within their resident, their 500 feet. And then, you know, one person, you know, one more person last minute wasn't able to make it and then that really set it off to there, they had to delay items for another week and it was last minute. So it's that, that issue with, if you don't, like we just said, if you have three people only coming to make a huge decision, that's, and if you had seven, then at least you have five, four people making decision, not three. So you're not really representing our city if you have three people making a large disqualified decision like that. And maybe that would be alleviated with other requirements that we don't place. And I looked at the, the wording and we only have two bullet points for the planning commission and even the other commissions have more wording on what's qualifying for them. Only section 2.44, it's created, planning commission of the city is created duties. The planning, the city planning commission shall perform the duties required by applicable state law and such other duties as may be ordered the city council. And then there's an amendment, that's, that's it. That's all we have in our wording.
Yes, Mr. Spears.
Okay, well, so I agendize this because I've been chewing on this for a long time. I, I supported moving to a five-person commission back when we did it. I recall the conversation at the time and I do remember how frenetic we were about how hard it was to recruit people. It seems like it's been a little easier since then, but, but you just refreshed my memory that it took us, we had four apps to fill three spots. Is that correct? So I remember that now, so I'm thinking, maybe it's easier, but if you lower your standards, it's easier. And we don't want to do that. So I'm having second thoughts about expanding. I think that possibly adding another term might, might, might actually have a more, a positive impact because, you know, if we are worried about the, somebody being green, at least for the people being turned out now, maybe one or two of them might stay on if they, if they didn't have to. As far as the diversity goes, I mean, I agree with that. I mean, obviously you want to get as many opinions as you can. I've never been to the impression that we didn't have a lot of qualified people on the planning commission. I've always been kind of impressed frankly by the backgrounds of our planning commission. A lot of them are architects or have backgrounds in, in construction, things like that. I've never sat in a committee, a council meeting in 10 years where we were picking planning commissioners where diversity was an issue. We're always looking for the best qualified person. So you could get four people that are, are architects and they're probably going to be the top pick of the council. Where's the diversity in that? So I, I don't think we can get, what I'm getting is, I don't think you can get this kind of idyllic diversity through the political process of a council selecting planning candidates. It seems to me it's, it's just too, too loosey-goosey. I mean, it's an ideal that I think we should shoot for, maybe we should talk about every time we do that, but you get different councils, you have different agendas, it's very fluid. So I would like to think, talk more about it, I think maybe expanding the terms for the planning commission. I'm not, I'm not, I didn't come here to advocate to expand to seven, but my thought was, hey, we haven't been able to achieve quorums. I was under the impression that we hadn't been able to achieve quorums. Now, according to the research, we didn't achieve a quorum in 2022. I was mayor that year and that was the year where we were going through the Meadows project. So missing that quorum was a big deal that year, but it was only one in the last two years. So that kind of takes a steam out of the idea that we need seven to be able to establish a quorum per se. I hadn't seen this information until I came in here tonight. So anyway, that's my take.
Well, and generally speaking, the quorum requirement goes up as well. So I mean, you, you are adding two for one additional quorum. So you could, you theoretically have a higher percentage likelihood just from statistical basis, but, you know, it's, it's not, it's not, it's not a, you know, a, a sure fix because you do then now have to have four people, so that's.
It was from 60% of the body to 50%, 7% of the body.
Yeah.
It's a little bit, little better.
Yeah. But I mean, to, to the point of where people have to recuse themselves, I mean, it is nice to have that, an extra buffer, I guess.
Question on, you can return back to the commission after being absent a year? Is that, is it a year or two years?
I don't, I think it says no, it didn't say.
It's one year, Mayor Protem.
Okay. So, so I mean, I mean, that's the other thing is, is that, let's see, so Commissioner Spears has been, how long have, have Commissioner Spears and Commissioner Hutt been off of the commission?
So we don't need to add numbers, we need to add specific people.
I've just, you know, I mean, I mean, you know, having been the liaison to it and, and gone through all of those meetings and listened to all of them, especially during the Meadows, both of them had, had tremendous experience, you know, and if we could clone them for many reasons in this community, it would be, it'd be really good. And, you know, it's, that's the thing is, is, you know, if we go from five to seven, do we get, are we able to tap into more of that expertise? That's what I'm trying to wrestle with. This is that, you know, if, if you get people that just want to get involved in the city and, and want to get on a commission and they just want to, they're, they're willing to be any commission and, and they'll serve, that's one thing. Or if you've got someone that actually really, really understands the area and is passionate about housing and building and density and homeowners' rights and all of that, that's another thing. And I think that that's, you know, that's what I'm weighing in my mind and want to think more about. I don't, I don't have a, a complete, I, I don't have a fully formed decision on it yet. I, I need a little bit more information before making a, a decision on this.
Or even historical perspective of the city. I mean, that's important as well.
Right. Yeah, exactly.
So I'm, I'm wrestling with. So I'm, I'm wrestling with, um, you know, w, if we're receiving a certain amount of applications, just passing someone through, to me would be problematic. Um, uh, someone that's, that the mayor does not see as qualified, that feels obligated to put on the commission because we didn't receive enough applications. To me, that would be a nightmare worse than the problem of being, not meeting quorums every now and then. Uh, but we do have a duty to make sure we have a commission that does meet quorums because we do have residents and applicants that are trying to, uh, update their homes. Uh, we do, we do, they also look at the, the municipal code on top of that. There's a lot, a lot of tasks that they do.
We have statutory requirements in terms of timing. I mean, that, that's one of the things that's most important about this commission is we actually have requirements that they act in a timely way unlike, you know, the rest of us.
So thinking, like, thinking of that and, and kind of the timing issue, and I'm thinking about Commissioner Spears specifically. We asked him to stay on because we were going to bring new commissioners on that did not have any experience on the previous deliberations. Therefore, they could not have been speaking on the Meadows project. So we, you know, we, I think that, that staggering is important. Um, and remember, we're asking a lot of these residents because it's a, it's an arduous task. Um, I've watched a ton and been to a ton of these meetings. To ask somebody to stay for nine years or come off one and come on for another eight, that's asking a lot from a resident. And we only have a certain amount of residents that are willing to do that or have that expertise. But, um, you know, bouncing around some of the advantages of seven, I don't know if we've had a subcommittee recently, but, um, if they need a subcommittee, the, the bigger the, the body, the easier you can find subcommittees to come up with, with, um, answers to problems that are, you know, a little bit outside of the body deliberations. That's a pro, right? Um, you get a little bit more percentage, um, business. And then also the continuity of projects. Because these projects sometimes are long. I know they're trying, the state's trying to shorten the process. But if they go over, um, you know, our fiscal year and we're losing two or three commissioners, then, you know, what happens to that body when they're coming to vote on, on something? So a lot of pros, but also some nuanced cons. Um, and I, you know, I'm, I don't have a horse in the game either way. I, I think what we should, obviously, I know, I know the four of you, we're, our decision's going to be what's best for Seor Madre. Um, so, um, it's a, it's a little bit of a, of a wrestling match here with a little bit of the unknown on what kind of applicants we're going to get. And I think that's, that's the scary part for me.
You know, and, and the other thing in my mind is, it's kind of as you were talking about, uh, Councilmember Garcia, is, is that, you know, it, it, in one hand, they're meeting twice a, a month where every other commission meets once a month. So at some level, it, you know, it's twice as much commitment. So we should have more people, right? That, that, that's on one hand. On the other hand is, are we going to find more people that are, are able to make that commitment? Like, what's the trade-off on that? I, that's, I, I really want to think through that and, and make sure, yeah, like you said, we're making the best decision for the city and its residents.
If we are considering, you know, possible ways to address the concerns, not necessarily just expansion, one thing it would be interesting to know, and whether that's tonight or, or at a future, uh, meeting, is when we do have planning commissioners who are coming to the end of their term, whether it be the first term or the second term, are folks typically, you know, if we were talking about expanding terms or, you know, or expanding the, the limits, are there folks that would actually be interested in taking on another term? Because it doesn't make a lot of sense to, you know, discuss that as a possible opportunity or, um, or solution if, if for the most part, after four or eight years, people are, you know, ready to come off and do other things.
We, we've staff concerned, we polled the commissioners and see if there is an interest in serving a third term. Um, just for, for the, based on some of the feedback that staff has heard, after eight years of doing volunteer work, they're, they're ready for a break. Although, um, Mr. Spears has just completed his one year of not sitting on a commission. So if he is so inclined, he may apply for the vacancy that will be in, effective July 1st from Commissioner Pepsner.
I think the language actually says reappointed after a break in service. There's nothing about a year. It's, uh, item, it's section one amendment, um, item C. No commissioner or board member shall ser, not, not that you want to rush back, you know, wants to rush back, but there is nothing that says one year. It just says, um, no commissioner or board member shall serve more than two consecutive full terms, although a person may be reappointed after a break in service, period. Completion of a partial term shall not constitute as a full term for purpose of this section, nor shall service on two different boards or commissions be counted in determining when a commission or board member has reached the term limit provided by this chapter. And I did get clarification, uh, Den, Commissioner Dennison or Chairperson Dennison said that as of June 30th, he will be the only commissioner with more than one year experience on the commission. In fact, he will be the own, he'll be, he'll have more experience on the commission than the sum of the balance of all the other commissioners.
So that sounds like a, a timing issue, right?
Maybe the year is just because typically we do it once a year as people roll off. And so maybe it's just, we, we wouldn't necessarily have the opportunity to consider a vacancy until the following year's staggered term ends. Just sort of a practical thing.
Well, we've got some large projects, you know, and things coming up and it's just so hard to understand like what's going to happen. And it's, their job is so important. I mean, listening to what they've been going through with the One Carter Estates and how important their, their conversations have been about massing and what things look like and, and how, how they're giving instruction and, and, um, guidelines to different builders and, and different families and listening to the feedback from everybody. And it's, it's so dynamic and I, I can't imagine, I mean, I'm new this year to this. I don't, I can't imagine what that's like.
I mean, staff helps tremendously, but they, they still need to know, you know, the settlement agreement and how, how these things fit within the settlement agreement for those projects up there.
One question I have is that I do think historically the role of the planning commission was much more fulsome than it is now and that certainly it will be into the future, you know, based on the trend from the state housing laws. And so while we have, you know, the One Carter is sort of a little bit of a grandfathered in project because it's, you know, from a settlement agreement that was privately determined and is sort of outside of the, I mean, I suspect, and maybe city attorney has thoughts about this, I suspect going forward, the purview of the planning commission is going to continue, I, I would expect it to continue to narrow.
Their, their purview will narrow, but the technical expertise required is going to increase. Because, because the laws are so complex, we're going to have to do more trainings with the planning commission. Uh, Planning Manager Lynn and I have already started planning for a training on like a mock planning commission meeting so they can issue spot some of the pr, common problems that arise unrelated to all the housing laws. Just common problems that arise relating to conflicts of interest, Brown Act, uh, things that relate to the planning commission often other commissions don't have to deal with.
Hey, uh, Clerk Ag- Aguilar, did, is it typical, do we have applications six months in advance? Or is it, you know, kind of like a lot of things with deadlines, that everything kind of happens at the last minute? You know, is, i- i- is it typical to have, you know, five people in the innings waiting to, to serve in, 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 in Seor Madre's history?
Uh, that is not typical. Uh, we've, we've had a benefit of changing our, our, our policy and the way we do things. And when we do have extra applications now, we do ask that the council consider vacancies that are anticipated six months out. So that change in philosophy has helped keep the vacancies low. But as of right now, uh, we are expecting some vacancies and we don't have any applications received.
I noticed too, though, like I said before, when we had those vacancies recently on the, um, community service and on the, um, environmental, I don't know, the resor, human, or the-
National resources.
National resources, thank you. Um, that, when I had spoken to people that applied, they couldn't access, they didn't know that there were vacancies until they went to a specific search on our website. So our, our website didn't make it available for them to find the application until they could find it or you just come inside, which is obviously what we don't do anymore. No one goes inside the city hall to usually get a paper application. Usually you apply for things online, especially post-COVID. So if, if it's not advertised right now that we even have a senior commission, but only you can only go to the Hart House, you have to come to the city hall, we're not doing good di, uh, due diligence to our public to let them know what's happening and what's open. Because I didn't even know that was coming up open and I'm on council.
Yeah. I mean, currently I'm kind of sitting, I'm, I'm, I'm definitely open to seven, but the, if the city attorney could do some more research on the up to seven, I mean, I think that, that could solve some problems because I don't want the mayor on the appointments to be handcuffed to, well, we have three openings and three applications. We just have to slot everybody in.
I mean, is that-
If we-
Yeah, if we had a requirement of seven.
Had a requirement.
And, and historically, if we've had, even at a five, if we've had multiple vacancies and not sufficient applications, what do we do? If we've mandated that there has to be five on any, every commission and we have a two vacancies and we only have one application, how does that shake out?
There has been a shift in that since the council changed and, and made the five consistent. So we've been able to accept sufficient, um, uh, applications, but prior to that, the vacancies existed for months sometimes. Um, in, in some cases, and I, they're, they go on for six months vacant while we're recruiting. Uh, the city staff does work with the commission because the commissions are, are, know what it takes to, to run the meetings and to manage the projects. City staff does work with the co, the existing commissioners to recruit people that they feel would be a, um, adequate or good candidates for the commission and the vacancies.
So if we have hard membership requirements that then key, you know, then then, then establish hard quorum responsibilities, there could definitely be a situation where even with five, if we only had two appointed members, that, that, that commission could not undertake business. Is that correct?
With, with, with two members, the commission could not undertake business.
So if we could have a situation where if there weren't enough, if there were too many vacancies and not enough applications, we could actually have a situation where the commission could not do business.
Right. And just three, three things I wanted to point out based on the conversation. One is some agencies, given this limitation, not to say this is the situation Seor Madre, but the ci, the city council takes on the role of planning commission, which is also statutorily authorized. So I know some agencies do that to solve this problem. Second, just because the ordinance says there are seven, uh, commissioners on a planning commission does not mean that the planning commission has to appoint seven. It's at the discretion of this body to appoint and remove. So I don't think there's any mandate upon the commission to appoint seven, even though it says there shall be seven on the commission.
But if the quorum is four, then you have to have a, I mean, it basically creates a minimum of four.
It creates a minimum of four. And, and, uh-
You mean, if we're short of seven, we still have, have, have to have a minimum of four?
Quorum of who's, who's appointed though.
Kind of goes back to that question.
Yeah, it goes back to the quorum.
Yeah, right now- The body.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think the mayor was concerned though, correct me if I'm wrong. I think you were concerned that if we set it at five or the, or the city council sets it at seven and you receive an, if you have, let's say you set at seven and you already have six currently and you receive an application, you, you, perhaps you'd feel obligated to appoint that person to that seventh seat. Well, there is, I'm, I just want to point out, there is no statutory obligation to appoint that person. That's totally at your discretion.
But, but to pull the, the thread of what you were saying before, if you have, um, seven members for the planning commission, that means that the quorum is four, even if you only have five members appointed.
That's right. And, and another issue with potentially what, uh, Councilmember Garcia was talking about is if you tie the quorum requirement to the number of people currently serving in that office, then you could have a situation where, let's say you only have six, but you just increased the quorum requirement to four, making it more difficult for the planning commission to meet quorum. Because now if you, your quorum requirement is higher, but you only have one additional person instead of two additional people.
So it's by body, not appointed.
Ri, so right. So it depends how the, if, if, if that's an allowable meth, then, uh, it's something to consider for the, for the city council when determining what-
Unless you put up two maybe.
I was, I was, yeah, I was thinking the other danger of setting quorum based on the then-appointed number versus the authorized number is that if you had a situation, you know, it probably never, it's an unlikely situation, but if you had, for some reason, a mass exodus and you only had, say, two members, then I mean, then you have a quorum of, well, I guess, sorry, three members, then you only have a quorum of two and then two people are making decisions. And so, I mean, look, I mean, th- those, these are all things that we can't necessarily plan for, you know, and, and, and these are not problems we've had current, you know, so I don't know that we need to like fully address every single potential consequence, but-
Does the commission also follow the teleconferencing same guidelines and rules?
Yeah.
So they can teleconference if it's under the ma, the majority?
Correct. Well, the, the majority still has to be physically present.
Yes, yes.
Right. But yes, individual members can teleconference under the Brown Act.
I mean, I think, but practically speaking, that requires, you know, advanced notice as much as any other.
Yes, exactly. One hundred, yeah. One hundred percent.
Because we can't accommodate.
They do have issues with, you know, if it's a medical issue or, you know, that would be probably more feasible than just having someone not being able to come because-
What is the burden on, on staff for doing, um, teleconferencing for, let's say, the planning commission? I know when it's, when it's us, it's, it's a pretty high burden on staff. What, as far as planning commission, what, is it equal?
Um, have we had that experience? Fair, would you, can I defer to you?
As far as like IT, um, the, the technical aspects?
It, it would be the same as, as the city council meeting.
That's correct. It will be equal.
Well, I'm not hearing consensus at this point for perhaps taking a vote tonight on any, any action in terms of, you know, up, amending the code tonight to, or directing the preparation of amendment of the code to increase to seven. So I'm wondering if folks would like to hear more information and perhaps direct staff to come back with some of the, the answers to some of the questions and issues that have come up tonight? If that's the case, then I do have to make a motion to that effect or can we just direct staff?
Will, will the city council be continuing the item to a date certain? Or will you be just providing direction to staff to do further research?
Yeah, I think, I think the latter. If, if folks-
Well, we do, we do have appointments in six months. So I, I, hopefully sooner rather than later. I, I mean, I don't want to put a date certain, but I think this is an important, uh, discussion for the council to, to make a decision on sooner rather than later.
Okay. Then, then if it's only direction to staff, then there's no, no votes necessary. We have, and the direction I have, I don't know if there's other direction, but it's to research the issue of whether or not we can tie the, uh, the number of the body to, to those appointed or those serving in office. That's, that's the only question I have to research myself. I don't know if there are other.
Is anybody else, oh, sorry, go ahead. Nope. No, I was just, I was going to ask, do other people feel that they were asked, they asked questions that they would need input on?
Uh, what, um, other cities are, what other planning commissions do for term limits? Should we look at changing the term limits? If, if someone wants to continue past the eight years, should we allow them to? Um, and then the other question was, um, oh, putting, putting, um, requirements and language into the wording for the planning commission, more direction than just one du, one line for a duty? Like, for instance, do we want to put on, um, attendance requirements or add the telemarketing? I mean, telemarketing, teleconferencing?
We did extend Commissioner Spears for six months in 2022. I don't recall that what the, under what authority we did that.
Yeah, we just did it.
No, we, we amended the municipal code to accommodate that change, yeah.
So if we were going to do this, you know, on a routine basis, extend terms and we'd have to, we're basically going back and amending the municipal code every time we do it.
So, uh, if I may, the municipal code allows for a partial term. And in, in this case, uh, we were able to extend Commissioner Spears's term for a partial, for an additional six months under the partial term, um, what, what policy of the municipal code.
But, but ju, just to add on to that point, it's a, it's a partial term when the number of commissioners decreases to less than, says the city commissions may exceed five members and reappoint existing members who are eligible for an additional term as of July 14th, 2024. That was the provision, right? Was that the provision you were referring to?
It's when the decreases to less than five members, that's what.
If, if we're talking about the same provision, I remember it was a specific carve-out for Commissioner Spears's si, situation, but wha, I'm not sure there-
I do recall that it was a partial term and that he qualified under the partial term, um, provision.
Because we had less than five members because someone had to medically rec, um, retire earlier.
Right.
Yeah, I think he was appointed to fulfill somebody else's term.
Right, right.
Well, yeah.
So it wasn't the extension of his term, it was appointing him to fill someone else's-
Right.
Remaining term.
And we had an anticipated- delay in service.
So what I'd like to know then is what legal means could we have, if there is such a thing, to have on a routine basis to extend terms if and when we have not been able to recruit adequate applicants? Short of, short of just changing term limits.
Right.
How much?
More discretion.
Yeah, how much discretion do we have and how much discretion can we get?
So I'm feeling that, especially, you know, former Commissioner Spears, his comments were well taken, I think, very, very, you know, well spoken, and I'm agreeing with a lot of what he says. And so a lot of the knowns, we can kind of battle with having the seven, but there's some unknowns which are created. So, you know, I'm just kind of letting you guys know, like, a straw poll of where I sit. I feel as though seven would be something that, it's palatable to me because of all those issues, but there's a lot of unknowns, right? And how do you plan for the unknowns? That's the hard thing.
And I should say, just for full disclosure, the conversations I had, just because his name came up, you know, in this discussion, is, you know, I reached out to former Commissioner Hutt, you know, to ask his opinion on the issue, and he was strongly, also strongly in favor of seven for many of the same reasons, you know, expressed by former Commissioner Spears tonight. So just because, you know, his name did come up, I did want to put that out there as well, if that was of use to folks as they think about this. And he did not express an interest in coming back, although I didn't ask, it was not part of the discussion, but he wasn't volunteering that information either.
And like.
Yeah, greater diversity, I think, is one of the.
If you can do it.
Yeah. I think our current planning commission's pretty diverse as far as their specialties are concerned.
And like committee members or council members, Garcia and Goss, I'm inclined to move to seven. I think the workload is there. I do get nervous of getting enough people in. That's the thing that, it's the one part that gives me pause. And so, because we saw that, you know, I was on council when we were almost begging people to be on commission. So I, I'd like to see a little more information. I think that the one other thing I'd like to see is what the the number of times we've not had five people attend. I don't want to, I have no interest in getting down into what the attendance rate of any member is. I'm just interested in, like, how many times did we have less than five? And that'll help me think through, you know, life happens, right? Two meetings a month, it's hard enough to plan if you're a working professional, like, you're trying to move your travel, if you travel around on those types of things or other events, so.
To that point, I've often talked about an onboarding process for all our commissions from this day, is right. And I don't think I articulated it well. I feel as though, since the commissions do serve at the pleasure of the council, the council should set expectations for those that are serving. Not to limit and say, you know, we don't, you need to do this, you need to do that, but more of, when you're, if you're a volunteer coming on to a board, you should probably have an understanding of your expectations on all kinds of issues, the quorum, attendance, what's expected of you. You know, we're relative volunteers here as well, as you know. But I think that's very important, and that gets rid of that, some of those other issues. I think, I don't know if we form a subcommittee or something to have some type of, maybe a document, welcome aboard, and what we expect. And I'm not trying to be hard, what we expect, like, we're the kings here. What the council expects and what the community would really expect out of a commissioner for the purposes of some of those other issues, if that makes sense.
There is a packet for commissioners, is there not?
There is a commissioner guide, and the city clerk's office does sit with the newer, with the newly appointed commissioners to not explain at that high level, but more in general, how commission meetings are run and quorums and how to make motions and just the basics of conducting a meeting. But they don't get, we don't typically, but we can get into the expectations for the commission and attendance. But we're, if that's something that the council desires, we can include that in our onboarding.
Not something that discourages volunteerism, but something that.
Know what you're getting into. Because right now, say, like, chapter 2.4 has community service commission. It gives a whole page, two full pages of what's expected and what your job role is. And planning commission is one, two, three, five lines.
I mean, in general.
Revisit that, for sure.
For sure.
For sure.
I mean, in general, I am in favor of more discretion than less to be able to be nimble and address, you know, situations that we can't foresee or we have foreseen, but it's never happened before. So, I mean, I, you know, I really don't have a particular view on five versus seven, but, you know, I get worried about being locked into seven, and so this suggestion by Councilmember Garcia about, you know, allowing for up to seven, but if we don't have seven qualified applicants, you know, can we do that in a way that doesn't, you know, disadvantage and cause further, or, you know, exacerbate the problems that we're already having in terms of attendance and quorum? So that's, I think, where I'm leaning towards if we have seven qualified applicants and that creates the diversity that we are seeking. That would be, you know, amazing, obviously, and so I'd like the ability to take advantage of that. But I'm also wary about being locked into it for the exact reasons that have been stated, that we don't want to have a situation where one person applies for one spot and we don't feel as a council that that person is going to serve the community in the way that we would like. You know, I'd like the ability to be able to decline the appointment and not, you know, not negatively impact the commission in that way. So that's my direction, if that's the direction. Do we feel like we have, City Manager, do you feel like we have enough to come back at some point in the not-too-distant future?
I think that we have enough direction, and looking at our forecast and the workload that the planning department has, I think that we're probably looking at, understanding that if council makes any changes, we're going to require two meetings. Probably the second meeting of March, staff feels comfortable bringing this item back. And again, it's due to the workload that they currently have.
Okay, all right, and so that brings us to, I believe, our last discussion item, consideration of resolutions 24-6, 7, and 8 relating to liaison appointments and appointments to San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, League of California Cities, Southern California Association of Government, and the Los Angeles County Sanitation District. So I don't know if, how we want to proceed logistically.
There's really no right or wrong way. You do have a list of appointments that I believe that you have. We could go over that list and fill in any gaps.
Do we want to, are we able to put it up, or do we not do that? Let's find either way.
I don't believe that we're prepared to.
Okay, no worries. So I had. So I have polled the council as to their preferences, yeah, I haven't filled that one, thank you. As to their preferences for, and availability for certain appointments to liaise with the various city commissions and boards, and then also the various outside organizations that we send representatives to on a regular basis. And give me one second to pull that up. So I can just go through this, and like I said, I think folks have indicated their interest and availability for these appointments, so I think it's just a matter of publicizing them. But for the planning commission, I am proposing Councilmember Lowe as the primary liaison and Mayor Protem Parkhurst as the alternative. For the senior community commission, I am proposing Councilmember Garcia as the primary liaison and Councilmember Goss as the alternative. For the community services commission, Mayor Protem Parkhurst as the liaison and Councilmember Lowe as the alternate. For the natural resources commission, myself as the primary liaison and Councilmember Garcia as the alternate. And for the library board of trustees, Councilmember Goss as the primary liaison and myself as the backup. Do you want to do this as one at a time? Should we, go ahead and?
I think you can continue, and if we can fill them all in, and if there's any gaps, we can have discussion.
I think by statute of authority of some sort, the delegation for the Los Angeles County Sanitation Districts are set to be the mayor and the mayor pro tem. And then we do have a new outside organization that we've been asked to provide representation to, and that's the Board of Supervisors General City Selection Committee. I know former Mayor Garcia had been the delegate for that, and I'm happy to take over that, but we do not currently have a delegate or an alternative delegate for that. I don't know if there's anyone that wanted to volunteer to do that. I know Councilmember Garcia is going to attend this week, given the transition, but I don't know if folks are interested in being the more.
Often, isn't it me?
Mayor, I can answer that. I did speak with the Board of Supervisors office, and it's a quarterly meeting.
Okay.
And it's often difficult to establish a quorum for that, so sometimes those meetings are postponed, so there's no set schedule. But the idea is that they would meet on a quarterly basis.
Okay, thank you.
So it's at, generally, it's at Kenneth Hawn Hall, right by Stanley Moss Courthouse.
Right.
And it's, I think, 10 o'clock on Thursdays. And when they don't meet quorum, they know a little bit ahead of time, they just kick it a week or two out, and they keep kicking it until they can figure a quorum.
Can you just give, like, three sentences on what exactly the board does? I mean, because again, this is somewhat of a new organization, based on your attendance.
Well, they've been canceling meetings during, and so I think the only one that I attended in person was to appoint a representative for the Blue Ribbon Committee on Homelessness. And that's where, as my delegate, me as a delegate, voted for Mayor Chevlin from Monrovia. And the next meeting that's on Thursday is kind of an extension of the Blue Ribbon Commission. So it's generally like one item. It's not like the sanitation district where there's warrants and other things to go over. It's just when there's issues for the different sectors or sections that meet. So they, and it's not, not the whole body doesn't generally meet, it's usually, you know, something similar to our COG. Those representatives would meet with the Board of Supervisors.
Is it the whole board or is it by district?
So my experience is it's been, like, similar to the COG, right? Our COG is San Gabriel Valley, which is a subset of Los Angeles County.
Right.
So, or mainly is Los Angeles County. So it's only that portion that has been meeting.
It'd be District Five, it'd be Barker's District that.
No, it goes, there's, it's, the COG is not for one district. It's broken up, I think, amongst at least two supervisors, maybe three.
So it's the same, it's the same geography as the COG?
I don't want to say it's the same, but it's similar.
Similar, okay.
Okay.
That's been my experience.
That being said, anybody interested? Let me finish what the rest of the appointments are, and then folks can decide if they want to also volunteer to be the delegate for that appointment. The COG, as we just mentioned, San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, Councilmember Lowe as the primary delegate with Councilmember Goss as the alternate, the Southern California Association of Government, or SCAG, Councilmember Garcia as the primary delegate, with Councilmember Goss also being the alternate, League of California Cities, Councilmember Lowe as the primary delegate with myself as the backup, the Clean Power Alliance, Mayor Protem Parkhurst has served us so well. And then I think we've historically sent city staff in his stead if he is unavailable. And then the Foothill Workforce Investment Board, again, Councilmember Goss also serving us very well on that, has indicated an interest in continuing, and then Councilmember Lowe would be the alternate. And our last local, Sierra Madre Chamber of Commerce, Mayor Protem Parkhurst would be the primary delegate with Councilmember Garcia as the backup. So with that said, and then there's one other issue I want to discuss, but with that said, is there anyone who is interested and available to be the backup delegate, alternate delegate for the Supervisors General City Selection Committee? Yes?
I have a summary here, if you'd like me to read it.
Oh, sure.
Off of the website, it says, "The duties for the city selection committee are to appoint city representatives to such boards, commissions, and agencies as may be required by law, including LAFCO, South Coast Air Quality Management District, Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority, and to nominate for appointment members to the California Coastal Commission."
Okay, thank you.
I'll do it.
Thank you, that's Member Goss.
I'll do it.
Only problem is if I do COG and League of Cities, it's the exact same time meetings as planning commission. They're both, one is on the first Thursday at 6:00 PM, and the other ones are on the third at 6:00 PM. So they're pretty much the exact same times.
The COG?
The COG and League of Cities are the same time as Planning Commission, first and third Thursdays.
Yes, that is correct.
I think COG is more important than League of Cities.
Agreed.
If you can't find anybody, that would be the priority.
Yeah, although the priority really is the planning commission.
Right, yeah, of course.
And then, well, my question then would be, with Parkhurst, do you want him to serve on each type of, each different group or commission? Or was it just commissions that you were?
I was, I, my main interest was trying to serve on all of the city commissions, not necessarily the groups.
External. But you've served a term on the planning commission.
And the only reason we were staying with that is just because it's one of those things too, just like we were talking about, like, when you've learned and understood everything that's going on right now, it's like disrupting that in the middle, like, in the middle of a project, so.
So would you prefer reassigning the third-party, the outside associations?
Preferably, I'd like to try, I mean, just because, and some of them I think I'd understand more, but as a first-year council member, SCAG was really hard to understand. I have to say, like, it took me at least four months or five months to figure out how many different groups there were. So maybe someone who's more knowledgeable can better serve that. And the meetings were all during, when I'm working, so I didn't attend a single meeting.
The COG is the third Thursday at 6:00, oh, in Monrovia.
I could do, well, how long do they usually last? Do you know?
Hour and a half.
Okay, so I'd be short for the planning commission.
Yeah, no, I don't want you to have a conflict.
I'll do the COG if you want to pick out a.
Okay, we just, let's do that then, have Councilmember Goss be the primary delegate, and then we can come up with a separate alternate. I actually can continue as the alternate if we want, I've been the alternate. All right, and then League of Cities, oh, League of Cities only meets. They, I don't know that they actually always meet on the Thursday, so that might actually be okay. And if you need a backup, we can find one. And those tend to be much less applicable generally to our city, in my experience. And there are more presentations than it is interactive, you know, more so than like an actual meeting where action is taken. It's more of a, you know, they'll have people come and speak. So it's interesting, but it's not, we don't really have much input or, you know, there's not a lot of interaction. So let's stick with that, and then we can figure that out if there's conflicts.
And then, Parkhurst, you're taking over, so back to commissions, you're taking over chamber from me, and then I'll take community service commission?
Those are two different things.
Oh, no, wait.
Oh, did you guys want to switch?
I don't know, because I think you've only done planning commission before, right?
I have done planning commission, but if it helps you out, I.
It doesn't matter to me, either's fine, just know it's only a quarterly, quarterly, right?
Did you, are you asking if you want to keep chamber as well? Is that, I'm sorry?
I thought I was, but I'm not. If I'm not, that's totally fine.
If I could, I'd love to be in the chamber for a year if that's.
And they're going off running because we have the honors dinner. And they're going off running because we have the honors dinner come, coming up this month. So they just had their meeting, I'll just share my notes with you.
You're fantastic, thank you.
Okay, so did you get that, that one change that we made with respect to council member Low's appointments?
Parkhurst for Sierra Madre Chamber and then Low, we have her for-
Yeah, that, the chamber is not a change. That's, that's part of what I sent you. I think, I think the only change is to put council member Goss as SCAG.
Oh, COG.
Or sorry, COG, sorry.
Yes, I have that.
Okay. And then you can put me as the backup.
Could you go over the Planning Commission? We have Low and then who the alternate is?
Uh, Mayor Protem Parkhurst.
And then?
This is all, this, I, I sent, I sent this. I think the only change from what I sent you is, is the one that we just discussed.
And who, who serves as the board alternate, the Board of Supervisors?
Oh, we, that, council member Goss, I believe. Is that, is that still okay, even with the change?
Well, how's your teaching schedule?
I, I, I can take it if, if-
Yeah, I, I've taken COG and I think I'd rather have you take it if you would-
Okay. So, so, City Manager, the alternate for the Board of Supervisors Selection Committee will be Mayor Protem Parkhurst. Okay?
Can you send this out?
Yes.
Well, thank you.
For sure. All right, so with that, I think we've covered council questions. Does anybody else have anything they wanted to ask? We do offer public comment for this item. Madam City Clerk, does anybody have anything they want to say about this?
Uh, no requests for public comment, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Any discussion, further discussion?
Do we need to discuss independent cities?
Oh, thank you for reminding me. So historically, we've had on our matrix and had, I think have appointed folks to be our representative of the Independent Cities Association. But upon review by staff, it appears we haven't actually been a member of that organization for quite some time, since 2014. I'm not sure there's anybody on this council except perhaps council member Goss who really would have any experience with that association. So I, you know, I, I would entertain a discussion about whether folks think that it's worth re-engaging with them and finding folks to attend, or whether, given our hiatus and seeming not to be, just too disadvantaged by our hiatus, perhaps we, you know, keep the quite full schedule that we just went over. That would be-
I think we're doing fine without it, honestly.
That's, was kind of my sense. Anybody have a different opinion? Okay, so I guess the, the two items for approval of sorts is the slate of appointments and then I guess separately we can determine not to, or, or do we want to just do it as one vote?
I don't think there's, I don't think for the appointments you need a vote. It's, it's at your discretion.
Oh, okay. So do we need to talk a lot, at all about not having involvement in the Independent Cities Association, or is that also discretionary?
Well, that's, that's not discretionary because the, you're not currently involved.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, I, I think it, it makes sense to just strike it.
All right, well, that was anticlimactic, but I think we-
You get to make a decree if you like.
Yes.
Three resolutions, we don't need to, for-
I think there are resolutions-
There are resolutions, correct.
For certain-
For sanitation.
For sanitation, right.
Oh, yes. SCAG and, um-
Yeah, so we have to approve resolution 2406, designating a voting delegate, an alternative voting delegate to the COG. Resolution 2407, for a delegate, an alternative delegate to the League of California Cities. And 2408, designating a voting delegate, an alternative to the, to SCAG. So those are the three resolutions. I would entertain a motion either separately or as a group.
I move to, to adopt the city council liaison, liaison appointments in consideration in resolutions 2406, 2407, and 2408 relating to San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, League of California Cities, no.
Yes.
Oh, Southern California Association of Governments and the Los Angeles Sanitation District.
Mayor, those, those resolutions are currently blank for the individuals that are going to serve in that office. Do you, um-
So as, as-
Perhaps the motion should include the names of the individuals to serve.
Okay.
I have those written down if you want me to make the motion.
Go for it.
2408 is SCAG.
I mean, I can do it. I can provide the names if that's-
2408 is SCAG.
I, I, so, so I, I've got it. So I move to appoint, it's the Council of Governments, council member Goss to the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments. So that's 2406-
Krebs as alternate.
And Krebs as alternate, thank you. Or 2407, it's the Ca, League of California Cities and, and it would be Low and Krebs as alternate. And for 2408, the Sanitation District, it would be Mayor Krebs and Mayor Protem Parkhurst.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that, I don't think that's right.
Mayor Protem, the resolution 2408 is for Southern California Association of Governments for SCAG.
Oh, okay. They were listed differently, okay. So-
And SCAG is-
We don't have to do, we don't have to do Los Angeles Sanitation District, okay. So, so then 2408 for SCAG would be Garcia as a delegate and Goss as the alternate. So if I just go through those again, 24006 for the Council of Governments is Goss and Krebs. 2407, League of California Cities is Low and Krebs. And 2408, the Southern California Association of Governments, Garcia and Goss.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, let's check that one off.
Yay.
Do we have any items for future agenda?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
I'd like to agendize this discussion of, of home occupancy permits and temporary use permits. And I'd like to get staff to give us policy recommendations on home occupancy permits for the R1 zone, for conducting businesses like a commercial zone and for, yeah, temporary use permits for, of, of events with more than 25 occupants.
City Manager, is that enough direction?
That is enough direction, thank you.
Anyone else have anything? I would like to adjourn tonight in memoriam, as a memorial to our former resident, John Sheer, who was our 2011 hometown hero. He passed away this December. I'm just, I would like, like to read a little bit of, of a background. I'm sure many of you know of him. He passed away on December 12th and he was 102 years old. He was well-known as the paddock captain at Santa Anita Park and he, you know, was unparalleled, unparalleled in his dedication to, to that, that role. Part of the reason why he was named our hometown hero and one reason why he's pretty well-renowned is in 2011, he positioned himself between a loose horse and a child, which led to his hospitalization, but ensured the child's safety. He really did save her life. And, and his legacy does extend beyond that act. He does, he had, he had a distinguished career in six decades in service to the racing industry and he retired and, at 2020 at 99. So I'm glad he had a good three years of retirement. His life was a testament to resilience, courage, and unwavering commitment to the welfare of others. And we are proud to have him represent our city and grateful that he lived such an amazing life. And so we would like to adjourn with that thought. And if anyone could make that motion, I would appreciate it.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes and we are adjourned.